Okay, it's 4:15 and we are about to start this meeting. Welcome to the January 3rd, 2018 Regular Board Meeting. Ms. Scheck, roll call please.
Director Burke?
Present.
Director DeWolff?
Present.
Director Geary?
Here.
Director Mack?
Here.
Director Petu?
Here.
Director Pinkham?
Present.
Director Harris?
Here.
May we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will turn it over to Deputy Superintendent Stephen Nielsen for Superintendent comments. Our Superintendent, Dr. Nyland, is out with a health issue. He hopes to be back tomorrow and we hope he gets well and we know where you're watching. Thanks.
Good afternoon. I'll make my comments as brief as possible, given that we have a terrific board meeting coming up, including discussion on the boundaries. So, jumping into our strategic plan, under our educational excellence and equity, we've asked Gail Morris to come and present to us our overview of our Native program. And I'm looking for, where is Gail? Is she back? She's there somewhere or on her way. So, while she's coming, I will just say that our program has been expanded dramatically in the last couple of years and we have a very strong program at Chief C Health and at Denny and we have other programs being instituted in other areas and I'm nervously looking for her. So, I will just say, oh, I'll continue with my comments and when she gets here, we will introduce Gail. We have new Race and Equity teams coming up across the district. Yes?
Can I take chair's privilege here?
Absolutely, you can do anything you want.
And perhaps we could have the fine young people from John Stanford International.
That would work fine, too.
And then that would give Gail Morris an opportunity to come on down.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Nate.
Okay, so, John Stanford International School Choir, the directors will come on down and we cannot wait to hear you. Thank you.
Hello? Okay. Um, hello? We will be singing "A Spoonful of Sugar", "My Favorite Things" and "Locklament".
In every job that must be done, there is an element of fun. You find the fun and snap the jobs again. In every task you undertake, becomes a piece of cake. A lark, a spree, it's very clear to see that a spoonful of sugar helps the medicine go down. The medicine go down. The medicine go down. Just a spoonful of sugar helps the medicine go down in the most delightful way. A robin feathering his nest has very little time to rest while gathering his bits of twine and twine. Twine gives intent to his pursuit. He has a merry toot-toot-toot. He knows a song that moves the job along. For a spoonful of sugar helps the medicine go down. The medicine go down. The medicine go down. Just a spoonful of sugar helps the medicine go down in the most delightful way. Honeybees that flesh the nectar from the flowers to the coal. Every time they're blasting to and fro. Because they take a little nip from every flower that they sip. And hence, they find their tasty snow of wine. For a spoonful of sugar helps the medicine go down. The medicine go down. The medicine go down. Just a spoonful of sugar helps the medicine go down in the most delightful way. In the most delightful way. Raindrops on roses and whiskers on kittens. Bright copper kettles and warm woolen mittens. Brown paper packages tied up with strings. These are a few of my favorite things. Ring-colored ponies and crisp apple strudels. Doorbells and sleigh bells and schnitzel with noodles. Wild geese that fly with the moon on their wings. These are a few of my favorite things. Girls in white dresses with blue sacks and sashes. Snowflakes that stay on my nose and eyelashes. Silver-white winters that melt into springs. These are a few of my favorite things. When a dog bites, when a lovey stings, when I feel it sad, I simply remember my favorite things and then I don't feel so bad. By yon bonny banks and by yon bonny banks, where the sun shines bright on Locklament. Where me and my true love will never meet again on the bonny, bonny banks of Locklament. Oh, you'll take the high road and I'll take the low road. And I'll be its godland of glory. For me and my true love will never meet again on the bonny, bonny banks of Locklament. 'Cause there that we parted in young shady glen on the steep seaside of Locklament. Where deep purple hues of Highland hills be pilled and the sun coming out in the bloment. Oh, you'll take the high road and I'll take the low road. And I'll be its godland of glory. For me and my true love will never meet again on the bonny, bonny banks of Locklament. The wee birdies sing and the wild flowers spring. And as sunshine, the waters are sleeping. The roving hornets dance may second spring again. Oh, the wifled mayes skit when the green sings. Oh, you'll take the high road and I'll take the low road. And I'll be its godland of glory. For me and my true love will never meet again on the bonny, bonny banks of Locklament.
You are not done yet. Nope. Can you announce yourself? How long you've been teaching? How long you've been at John Stanford? And then if we could pass the microphone around? And first names? And your grade? And what language you're working with at John Stanford International School? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rabia Ahmed. The kids call me Ms. Ahmed. This is actually my first year teaching and my first year at John Stanford, which has been super fun with the choir.
My name is Nell and I'm in third grade and I'm learning Spanish.
My name is Zadie and I'm in third grade and I'm learning Spanish.
My name is Maeve. I'm in third grade and I'm learning Spanish.
My name is Audrey. I'm in third grade and I'm learning Spanish.
My name is London. I'm in fourth grade and I'm learning Spanish.
My name is Mohini and I'm in third grade Spanish.
My name is Gina and I'm learning Spanish.
My name's Julia and I'm learning Spanish.
My name's Lucia and I'm also learning Spanish.
My name is Chloe and I'm learning Spanish and in third grade.
I'm Valeria and I'm learning Spanish.
I'm Natalia and I'm learning Spanish and I'm in third grade.
I'm Marcela and I'm learning Spanish and I'm in third grade.
Hi, I'm Isabella and I'm in fourth grade and I'm learning Spanish.
Hi, I'm Spencer and I'm learning Spanish and I'm in fourth grade.
Hi, my name's Eleanor and I'm in Spanish and I'm in fourth grade.
Hello, my name's Nico and I am in fourth grade in Spanish.
Hi, my name is Maddie. I'm in fourth grade in Spanish.
Hello, my name is Cora and I'm in fourth grade Spanish.
Hi, my name is Caitlin and I'm in fifth grade Spanish.
Y'all are the best part of the meeting. Thanks so very, very much for being here. You did a fabulous job. Good job. Good job.
Thank you.
Deputy Nielsen, the floor is again yours.
Thank you. So, we again want to thank the students of John Stanford International School. Let's give them one more round of applause. I had forgotten what a sad song that last one is. So, we're going to perk things up now and talk about happy news. So, I'd like to introduce Gail Morris, who is Program Manager for our Native American program and she will be providing her annual report to the board. Gail?
Hello. My name is Gail Morris. I'm Natchalnuth First Nations. I'm manager for Native American education and I'm here to give my annual report. I'm pressing it. So, I would like to talk about things that we're doing in our program. I'd like to talk about things that we're doing in our program and you all received an update so that you can read that at your own convenience. I have a few minutes to talk about this, so I'm going to go through this quickly. We are up 552 506 forms, which are up from the previous year. It looks like low numbers, but what happened was that we had a lot of our students transfer out of Seattle Public Schools because they could no longer afford to live in this area, which is sad to say. So, while we are up, we've lost a lot of students. Our classroom at Shakachib is doing quite well. We're getting more and more students enrolling in families. We even have Samoan students who want to be in our classroom and we've enrolled a few. Our high school credit retrieval program's going really well. We'll talk about that at the end of the presentation. We do our summer school program. We had about 20 students last year and that was, that worked out really well at Lincoln and we're now at MENI. Again, our main objective for our Title VI Native Ed program are 506 forms. The problem with getting 506 forms are identifying Native students. So, that continues to be a challenge for us. We're just getting ready to go out and collect again. Again, we don't have enough staff to meet all student needs in schools. We don't replace teachers or buildings. We push in and we give support, academic support in the classroom, mostly around special ed, IEPs, transfers, appeals, those kind of things. But when we are in the schools, the staff that I have is amazing and doing great things. Transportation continues to be a huge issue for us in our after-school programs. We cannot have enough after-school programs. We can't open anymore because we just don't have transportation for students and most of the students won't walk home. So, that continues to be a problem. I wanted to talk about this. Since I've been here today, we've trained 402 teachers and librarians since time immemorial. That's up quite significantly. Before I was here, they trained 33 teachers from 2010 to 2013. We're excited about this. Shanna Brown, who's a teacher at Robert Eaglestaff, and I have been doing these trainings throughout the school district last year alone. We trained 141 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade teachers, which was great and I thought it was successful. I just want to talk about, we've done one training this year, October 13th. We're doing one January 27th and one in the spring of 2018. We went on January 27th. I'll post it in a Friday memo update. We're now collaborating with our visual arts manager, Gail Sellhorse, and we're doing training for all of our visual arts teachers here in Seattle Public Schools and it's, the topic is making the invisible visible. And look forward to that in the Friday memo, please. We have Highland Park in our after-school program. It's our fourth year at Highland Park and Sandpoint Elementary. This is our first year technically there through the city grant. Last year was ran through our vice president of our Parent Advisory Committee, Chandra Hampson. She ran that of no pay and grabbing kids and working with them along with another parent in the community. This particular school really needs a lot of our attention. There's been a lot of things that have happened in that neighborhood recently and so we're excited to be at Sandpoint Elementary. This right here, the SPS Native American Family Meetings, I would really love it if Kyle could speak to that. Kyle facilitated the meetings.
Thank you. Kyle Knostar, Chief of Curriculum Assessment and Instruction. And part of outreach to the Native community was to try and get some input in terms of how the district could better serve the needs of Native students. And so, we worked to make these meetings low-key. We had five meetings that were in various regions of the district, stretching out from May of 2017 to November. There were small attendance with one exception, but some common messages. And I want to thank Director Pinkham, who attended some of these meetings. But there are some clear and consistent messages, some of which that Native students around the district, part of what they experience unfortunately are instances of bullying, intimidation, and demeaning treatment, sorts of name-calling and things like that because of their background. And, you know, even though these instances may be few and far between in some cases, it still has a pretty great impact. And so, that drives a need that was stated by Native parents and community members for identity safety and a development of pride in Native identity. And these things could be addressed through curriculum, education of teachers and administrators and different programs. One other thing that was stated were that various kinds of services were needed to, need to be increased to deal with the various needs of Native students, both social, emotional, as well as academic. There are some pretty clear messages around program advocacy. One was the restoration of the Indian Heritage High School. But as well, we heard that increasing the number of programs such as Shakachi at Chief C Health and Denny would be important. These findings were reported to the superintendent and the superintendent will have a response to the community forthcoming. So...
So, I need to talk to you a little bit about the data quickly. So, the data summary that I'm not going to spend time going over, I'm going to let you look at it. When you look at it, there's going to be two different types of data that you'll see. One, the data is going to be the Native American Fed VII. Those are the students who identify as Native Americans. We have about 354 that only identify as Native American. In reality, we have more, we had close to 2,000 students who identify as Native Americans and falls in the multiracial category and they also fall into the Hispanic category. So, when you look through the data later, you'll see that, I'm sorry, the Native American was 334 who only self-identify. Hispanic was 1,941 and multiracial was 635 with a total of 2,910. Realistically, those aren't the right. The realistic numbers of Native American students in Seattle Public Schools is around 1300 to 1,500 and we're currently working on it. One set of data that I would really like to see go into this is the students that we actually work with, with 506 forms. Those are the students that we count, that we can track, that we know how they're doing in Seattle Public Schools and that is something that Eric Anderson said that we could work on, is creating a 506 input into the power school. So, I'm going to let you look through all of this later. It will be, is posted on the website. But I would like Richard to talk about this quickly as he works with high school, high school credit retrieval and fifth-year high school students as well.
Good evening, I'm Richard Summers. I work with secondary students for Native Ed. My family's from Heideberg, Alaska. We're Eagle-Frog Clan Alaskan Heides. I graduated from University of Washington with a bachelor's in American Indian Studies. So, these are the numbers strictly for our seniors for the 16, 17-year that graduated and had a 506 form on file for our program. Just in case everybody doesn't know what a 506 form is, it gives our program funding and it documents cultural heritage for each student that we work with. So, this is just a representation of that. Historically nationwide, our graduation rates hovered around 50%. This year, for the graduation rates last year is 23 out of 40, which is 57.5%, which is pretty good. But it gets even better when you realize that eight out of 40 of our students, they transferred out. And we can't really tell if that transferred out means they went to another district to continue school or they transferred out and dropped out and just didn't continue. So, you have to take that into account as well. Also, our fifth and sixth-year students that re-enroll. They continually graduate at a little bit slower rates. So, these students that didn't graduate last year, they might be graduating or close to it this year or already have. And even sixth-year students continue to graduate after that. So, our numbers keep increasing. Just for comparison, our graduation rates for 15, 16, maybe we're around 75%. So, I think with these students and this data set, we could get to around there. We also have a couple of students that participate in the Bridges Transition Program or in the experiential learning program. And they'd never go into our account for being graduated because their programs are usually for special needs students and they don't get a diploma that counts on our list. So, there's all these different factors that go into these final numbers. But I think we're doing pretty good overall for the students that we work with. Thank you.
So, for the sake of time, that's what we have to present. And like I said, we had some slides in there that we took out that will be in the Friday memo and in upcoming collaborations. You can look at our report and see who the staff is and what we're doing and who our partners are in Seattle Public Schools and what we're doing there. And that concludes this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Thank you, team. And we understand and appreciate that there's a lot more data here that I know is of interest to the board and to our community. So, again, we'd encourage us to take a look at that and we can address that through CNI Committee and other opportunities as well because it's very important and we're focusing on those things. And it looks like Director DeWolff has a question.
Just a clarifying question. So, this, it mentions the first Monday of every month that Media Middle School will have a culture night. So, does that take place next Monday? Or is January out?
No, we're going to, we just had a meeting today to look at our culture night and it will be, I think Monday is the 27th. That's what we're trying to do. And for the new board members, welcome and please feel free to reach out to us if you have any questions.
Thank you again, Gail and team. Other issues coming up around Race and Equity is we have 10 new Race and Equity teams. They have been out working in schools. They launched effort in December to educate school staff about how to institutionalize racial equity at the school levy, at school level, excuse me. That's a very important part of our EOG work and we're proud of that effort and we thank the board for investing in that opportunity. We're also making progress towards building effective systems in supportive schools. For example, the Seattle Education Association and our HR Human Resources Department is working together on improving site-based hiring. And this is a quote from the Seattle Education Unity. Interview teams will quote, "Now go through hiring training and receive the opportunity to engage in a larger discussion around tackling implicit bias at work sites while interviewing and hiring educators." Which we're very excited about that. And our HR department will utilize that same training into principal and central office hiring. Six years ago, four of our leading educational institutions in our city, Seattle Public Schools, University of Washington, Seattle Education Association and the Alliance, came together to create the Seattle Teacher Residency. So, just a quick update on that. The participants are all working alongside a seasoned resident mentor in a Title I school. So, we put them in our toughest schools. Participants commit to teaching in Title I schools in Seattle for at least five years. Addressing teacher retention, that's a huge problem for us and we're delighted that we're getting... we're getting terrific results from them. When they graduate, they get a master's degree, and they have it in either English language and/or special education. Our graduates are 40% people of color. That's double the number that we have in any of our other recruiting for new teachers. And best of all, they're staying in a profession. 91% of the teachers who went through this program in the last six years are still with us and working in Title I schools. So we're delighted, and we're looking forward to 19 more students in training this year. Families told us that they're interested in receiving texts. So in the process of helping communicate information to families, our communications department will be starting an opt-in program. So it's voluntary for people who would like to get texts, and they're on subjects, I cannot talk about school, the texts are better, by the way. That was a joke. School breaks, emergencies, and major district workings or meetings. Thank you someone for laughing. The spring, the communications department will support piloting this at a handful of schools, and we'll see what we can do for expansion next fall. Our Family Engagement Task Force has been active, and that has improved our survey results from families by 14%. They're working on developing Clear Vision Framework and tools to support school-based engagement, and are launching a new task force starting on the 24th of January, and they'll present their recommendations to the superintendent in June. On the 14th of December, good news, we had lunch and learn with Department of Family and Community Partnerships. It was a way to bring people together to talk about what we can do to support our schools, and it celebrated our communities and schools program and what they're doing to help our students. We also have other good news. Our participation was up 5.4% for sophomores and 8% for juniors taking the PSAT. The scores were up 9% for sophomores and 16% for juniors. The school board again voted to support this through district funds. This is a great asset to help students prepare for college. So again, thanks to the board and for our community in supporting us with those resources. Also coming up in March, every student will have access to the SAT. Again, this is something that we provide for our students. We don't get funding from the state or anyone else to do that. We do it with our local levy dollars. We think this is an extremely important thing to help our students, who otherwise would find this as a roadblock to pay for those costs. We have schools of distinction. We were recently honored with eight schools. They are Rainier Beach, Olympic Hills, Madrona, Hazel Wolf, Hawthorne, Cleveland, BF Day, and Alki. That's the largest number, both by number and percent, of any school district in Washington State being recognized with schools of distinction. And some of you may have noticed just last month that the New York Times published a survey about school district support. It was a Stanford study, and it was about student support and student achievement. And the Seattle Public Schools came in third out of 200 of the largest districts across the United States in student performance. So we're very proud of that. And Larry asked me explicitly to say, this reflects the hard work of our great educators, our community partners, our students, families, central staff, and the support of members here on the board. Thank you very much, and that concludes my remarks.
Okay. We will have two students giving testimony first up at 5:30, so we do not have the two South Lake High School students sitting here on the dais tonight. So, let's move on. We have now reached the consent portion of tonight's agenda. May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Where's my motion for the consent agenda? I move the consent agenda.
I second the approval, the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Approval of the consent agenda has been moved and seconded. Do directors have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Director DeWolf, I saw you moving down there. Okay. Going once, going twice. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have reached 4:40, 4:50, excuse me, and it is time for board comments. Who would like to go first? We're going to start drawing straws here, folks. Director Geary, please.
I will keep this short and sweet. Welcome back. Happy New Year. Looking forward to continuing the great work that we've heard about tonight. Had lovely holidays with my family, really did take the time off, as I hope many of our staff did. It's time to regenerate, to refresh and get ready for the new year. The days are going to get longer and we'll be putting, putting in the hours, I know it. I wanted to give a shout-out. I did attend the Native American PAC Holiday Celebration at Daybreak Star Cultural Center this December. Santa made an appearance. There was a toy shop with a room full of gifts for all the kids. And some of the comments that I heard while attending were, one that it, people were commenting that more children were there than they had seen in many years, and they were very happy about that. They really felt the spirit for the Native American community coming together at the center and celebrating together as a group. And then I have to say that I heard many lovely things about Gail Morris and how much she is appreciated, and the resounding ask was that she be given more people so she can do more work, because the work that she is doing is so appreciated by that community, and they want it to be wherever their students are. They want to have that support for their kids. They want their kids to be able to access the great education that Seattle Public Schools has to offer, but they know that they need the extra wraparound services to gain the cultural identity safety that we know here makes for success in education. I want to thank the John Stanford International School Choir for coming and singing to us. I know our new school board members, no doubt, just adored that, because as you will see over the next years, that it is one of the best moments of our meetings, and so it's a lovely opportunity. The other issue that seems to be coming up quite a bit lately is data privacy for students. And so I assure parents that I know our board cares very much about that issue, that we, as we are hearing about, talking about, sharing information with vendors, that we here at the district are making sure that students' privacy is being protected, that we are only releasing as much data necessary to access the benefit of the programs, that we hold that information very dear. But one of the questions that I personally couldn't answer, and I know maybe out there that to the extent that we as a district are not controlling the programs that are being used, I do have a question that I hope will be answered soon about when teachers and schools are using programs and having students enter data in them or identifying students through their names as their user log-ons. How are we making sure that that information is being protected? Are we instructing teachers about whether or not that's being released, what they're telling parents? You know, I just think that we need to be very mindful that parents, especially of our younger students, can be surprised when the student comes home with a log-on already entered into a system that may contain their name, and the parent doesn't necessarily know where that's gone. And they, they feel perhaps maybe even a sense of violation that they weren't asked first in that process. So let's continue to be very sensitive about that and continue to make sure that to the extent we have policies around it, it is being enforced in our buildings. And to the extent that perhaps we need a policy in order to create the training around it, we look at doing that as well. So until I hear comments from our parents, I'm going to, or our speakers that come and visit us, I'm going to tie it up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Geary. Who's next? Director Burke.
Good evening, and welcome back, everyone on the board and in the audience and at home, hopefully in front of a warm fire. I'll start with some thank yous and congratulations to the John Stanford International Choir. Sweeter presentation than multiple spoonfuls of sugar, so that was great. It's always nice to start the meetings with, with child talent, and that was, that was awesome. I want to also second what Director Geary had spoken in favor of the work of Gail Morris. I think that every time she comes before us to share her work, the progress that's being done, it just highlights the commitment of her team to do whatever it takes to reach students at their point of need. And I would also like to see how we can figure out how to provide a little bit of incremental resources to help build that beyond, take some of that enthusiasm and fund it at a little bit higher level. I want to also congratulate our schools of distinction with the trajectory that we're on. We're going to start needing bigger walls or smaller signs, and maybe we can overlap them a little bit, but that's, that's great. It's a wonderful confirmation of the work that's being done. I meant to say, as part of the Happy New Year thing, the holidays, that I really hope everybody got a chance to play in the snow, because it was a really unique opportunity here in Seattle, and so we work a lot with kids, and we should be kids at heart. And there's nothing like going out and throwing a snowball at your kid, or your colleague, or whatever, to truly, truly make a year-end. Some of the activities, it's been a pretty lean time in terms of board activities. It's just been really, really pleasant. I did have the pleasure of meeting last month with Phyllis Campagno of Seattle Education Association, and thank you, Phyllis, for meeting with me and much belated. I know we talked about doing that for a long time, so it was great to catch up on some of that work. And I wanted to put a huge thank you, I know we're going to touch on this issue a lot more in upcoming conversation, to the board and the staff and the community for their attention and their work on our boundaries and pathways, because it's a complicated issue. And we'll unwrap it a lot more, but I, I say privately, and I'm also willing to say publicly, that our last board meeting, it wasn't our finest hour. We didn't really have all of our information together. We didn't really get our alignment that we needed to, and we didn't move things forward. And I think staff and my colleagues and input from, from the community has been really helpful, and I'm hoping that in the month of January, we're going to be able to take that work and really narrow that down. I have a, a community meeting or an event that's going on at 7:30 today at Hamilton, which I double-booked and indicated that I probably would not be able to attend. But depending on how the meeting goes tonight, if it's possible, I may excuse myself just a little bit early so that I can attend the last part of that event. And if not, I apologize in advance for double-booking. Upcoming community meetings for me, I have three booked. One of them is Sunday, January 21st, 2 o'clock to 4 o'clock, Fremont Public Library. February 17th, Saturday, 1 o'clock to 3 o'clock, Green Lake Public Library. And March 17th, Saturday, 10 a.m. to 12 at Greenwood Public Library. Hope to see folks there. Thank you.
Next, director who wishes to speak? Director Patu.
I want to welcome everybody back and had a wonderful vacation, did not want to come back, but it's great to be back. I want to say thank you to Gail Morris for the great work that she continued on to do and all the wonderful, exciting things that's happening and on behalf of all the Native students. And really appreciate all the great work that you are doing with those students. And, and it's wonderful when you have someone that actually has a heart and really work distinctly with these, with our Native students and hopefully to continue on the good work that you're doing. I also like to congratulate all the schools of distinction, especially, special thanks to Hawthorne, Cleveland, and Rainier Beach High School for a job well done. Hopefully that we'll continue to see great things happening in the Southeast. And it's been an exciting year for me, because as I go out there and visit the various schools, it's amazing to see the wonderful things that each schools is actually doing on behalf of the students that attend in those schools. So continue on the good work. Also wanted to congratulate the Rainier Beach students that actually went and to Hawaii to, to play a basketball tournament. They won one and lost one, but it, it was really exciting to see them play various teams from different states. And, and also, it's glad to be back. There's a lot of work to be done, but I think that the break that we had actually got us ready to continue on the work, and hopefully that as we continue on the work, that we are able to look upon various strategies of what is it that we can do to continue to provide the excellent education to all our students in the Seattle Public Schools. And hopefully to continue on seeing more progress at, happening at Rainier Beach High School and also other, other schools that are actually moving forward. So looking forward to a good year and hopefully to see, to see more and more great things happening in our schools.
Thank you, Director Patu. Next up would be Director DeWolf. Thank you.
Good evening. Just Happy New Year and hope everyone had a great break. I want to first thank the choir from John Stanford International School. I'm, I'm only maybe more excited about it because, and tapping my feet at the front row, because when I was in elementary school, I was in the choirs, and I was the lion in the Wizard of Oz, and so I have a special place in my heart for the arts, particularly in music. So thank you to them and big, strong supporter of our, of our music programs. And also thank you to Gail Morris for your, for your work. We'll, we'll continue to look for opportunities to continue improving the outcomes and services and supports for our Native students here in Seattle Public Schools. Also wanted to congratulate all of the schools of distinction, especially Madrona. And another thing that I wanted to bring up this month, I work at an organization called All Home, and every year in January, we host an event called the One Night Count, as you may have heard prior to the, to last year, but currently we are calling it the Point and Time Count. And this is the one time each year where we spend an evening from 1 a.m. to 5 a.m. or 6 a.m., depending on the, kind of the time needs, to count the number of people experiencing homelessness within our, within our county, whether they are sheltered or unsheltered. So we do a huge event on January 26th. So I'm encouraging publicly everyone on this dais, as well as staff here and folks in the audience, to please sign up to volunteer. Need about 720 volunteers to do this count. We're at about 300. So I'm hoping every one of you are signing up this evening. If not, I will call you personally. But would encourage you, particularly, I'm bringing this up because our school has a real crisis on our hands, I believe. We have about 3,500 students that are experiencing homelessness within Seattle Public Schools. One of the issues that I talked about consistently on the campaign trail, and really want to make sure that that is a part of one of the work priorities that I'm doing here on the Seattle School Board. I bring this to your attention because I think that there's already some really great best practices that are happening across the state, particularly in Spokane. They have an organization there called Priority Spokane, which prioritized students experiencing homelessness and reduced chronic absenteeism, as well as graduation rates, and a lot of positive outcomes for these students. So I want to look at some of those opportunities, and hopefully we'll bring some of those ideas here. And I don't have any meetings set up just yet, but I will look forward to connecting with our schools and doing a tour in the next couple of months, so I will be reporting back on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Pinkham, director back. Director Pinkham, Director Mack. Director Mack, please.
Good evening and Happy New Year. Excuse me. I won't repeat the thanks, but I'm deeply grateful for the choir, as well as the work that's going on around Native American education. And it's wonderful to learn about it. Excited to be back. Our first board meeting was really exciting. And I'm honored to have been appointed the Chair of the Operations Committee, which is exciting and exciting, I'll actually just say it that way. We have a full agenda tonight of introduction of a lot of items that are related to buildings and capacity and facilities and a discussion around boundaries. And, you know, the schoolhouse is, it's where teachers teach and students learn. It's the iconic picture for school. And it's, you know, these operational logistics that we are talking about are really important. And it's challenging work. It's this complicated work. It's very personal, where we're going to school, what our buildings are like, the quality of them, et cetera. And we're entering a really exciting time. We're opening Lincoln in two years. It's the first time we've opened a high school in decades. So we have this huge responsibility and opportunity and it's a big investment in our students and community. So I'm really grateful for all of the input and engagement that we're getting from the community and the support around this process. I know that I'm hearing and seeing all the emails that are coming through and I know that my board members are as well, and looking forward to further discussion later. I know that our board directors are focused on, and staff are focused on landing on the scenario that is going to be the best for the most students, so that all of our students, each and every student, has the potential, has the ability to reach their full potential and graduate from high school, ready for college career in life. That's our goal. And I'm excited to work towards that together. I wanted to mention that last board meeting, I forgot to mention, in response to the students from Rainier Beach that were coming forward requesting renovation on their building, I wanted to say that yes, I strongly support that building and those students getting renovated as soon as possible. And in my mind, I'm wondering if we might even be able to speed up the timeline by pursuing other funding opportunities. I have no idea if that's even possible, but even putting on the Bex Levee is pushing it down the line and I'd love to see it happen sooner than later. I also want to commend and thank SCA and the district for the work on tackling the implicit bias and the new equity teams. I think this is really wonderful that we're focusing on that and carrying through with those commitments. And I've scheduled my first community meeting. So on Sunday, January 14th, from 1 to 2:30 at the Magnolia Library. Come on down. Thank you.
Director Pinkham, you're up.
So we'll go halvesies on the next 20 minutes? Is that what you want to do?
Have that.
Tatskalaat, good evening. Katsiawa, thank you. Thank you, John Stanford International School, your students in the choir. I wish my voice could go that high still, but I won't even try to do it. But they were lovely voices in sharing their songs, so thank you to the choir and their music instructor. Congratulations to the Schools of Distinction. One of these days, maybe we'll get all of our schools on that list and that'll definitely show we're going in the right direction. Gail Morris, Rich Summers, and Kyle Conish, thank you for your presentation on the Native Education Program. We are making strides, but we definitely have a long ways to go still. Our Native students oftentimes are overrepresented in many of our statistics while they're underrepresented in the overall numbers. So the more that we can do to help one of our most underserved and most at-risk students, the better the Seattle School District will do. And I think you'll get an idea from Gail with her presentation, just even one thing, just identification of our Native students is a very touchy issue. And how do we get them identified, make sure they're counted, make sure that they're supported? Even if they may be counted in our reported numbers to the feds or whatever, wherever we report the numbers to as Hispanic or multiracial, we don't want to lose them because they're valuable assets to our future Native community. So appreciate the work that she does and we need to see what strides we can go to help them out because they talk about, they just don't have the staff to support all the students. So if we can help them out with more staff and also listen to the community and what their needs are. And I do have to give a shout out that I do support restoring Indian Heritage High School to see what we can do for that. If we are building a new school, high school in this area, maybe one thing to consider, can that be the new American Indian Heritage High School? And not necessarily a high school just for Native students, but a high school that will show that the Seattle Schools, the city of Seattle itself cares about the Indigenous people in this area by having a school that reflects their presence here. You know, be it the thing about things that, even the signs we have in our schools, we have very little Lishutse language on any of those signs. We have a lot of other languages, but where it's a Native language, Indigenous people in this area, I think it'd be speaking volumes of, if we can include those in our publications. Even though, yeah, maybe there aren't that many Native speakers around, but he acknowledges the Indigenous land that we're on. Need to put my glasses on here and look at my notes. I was also out at Robert Eaglestaff Middle School and did see the beautiful quilt that they got framed and posted, so hanging on the wall. So if anybody's around there, please swing by Robert Eaglestaff Middle School, check out their cafeteria and the lovely quilt that was given to the school, I believe it was by the Robert Eaglestaff, his family, that is now framed. And thanks to you, to the shop here, that actually, I think they built the frame handmade and got that up. It's a very lovely presentation, so encourage people to go out there and look. Also remind, the Urban Native Education Alliance does have its cultural and tutoring meetings on Tuesdays and Thursdays out at Robert Eaglestaff from 6 to 8:30 here on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Thank you to, blanking on the name of the principal at Robert Eaglestaff, sorry. Marnie Campbell, thank you, for being a gracious host out there for us. So again, this is a program that's open to all students and is going to cover about Native culture. Much like what Gail was able to do with through the resources, we were able to pull together some data community help out. And actually, the students built hand drums themselves over these holidays and now they're making their drumsticks. And once that gets all done, they'll probably paint their drums as well. So again, it's just a good hands-on activity for our Native students. For me, I will have my, hopefully, my first meeting of the year on January 20th. Waiting for confirmation from Lake City Public Library. I put in the request for it and it should be, once confirmed, on, again, Saturday, January 20th, from 10:30 to noon. I will have another one then on February 24th, from 1 to 2:30 at Northgate Library, and that space has been confirmed. And then if things work out, and then Saturday, March 24th, I'll have another one from 10:30 to noon at Lake City Library. Again, I have to wait for Lake City Library to get back to me with confirmation. And just before I leave, I want to say, apologize, maybe I don't apologize, but maybe help out Rick's kids that are getting snowballs thrown at them, that if there's a next snowball, or snowfall comes, we'll have to see what we can do to help Rick's kids out. Because that's the first thing he says, hey, snow is falling, you can throw snowballs at your kids. Okay? So be on the lookout if it snows again, Rick.
I'm with you, Director Pinkham. I'll drive across town for that one. Thank you so much. Okay, I'm up next and I will make them my comments as short and sweet as I can. My next community meetings are January 20th from 3 to 5 at the West Seattle Library and February 17th at the High Point Library. You have a 50% chance of getting lasagna. And it's good lasagna and it's worth coming for. And those of y'all that haven't set up meetings, you're more than welcome to attend mine. They're pretty rowdy and they're kind of fun and they're great people. The John Stanford International School Choir, found myself singing along and from an old camp counselor. I think that at some point here, this board needs to put on a show. We've all been talking about our musical talents and we could probably even raise some money for some homeless students. So what do you say, Director Wolf? You want to help me with that one?
Absolutely.
Okay, there you go. Couple of other things that have come up. The internal auditor, Andrew Medina, has revised and clarified the conflict of interest policies that'll be going out this next week. It will also include pass-through funds through entities that do business with the Seattle Public Schools, either the state, CBOs, et cetera, so that we can show that folks sitting on this dais and our senior staff are well above reproach and any appearance of conflict of interest. It will also include honoraria and travel, et cetera, so that lest there be no doubt, no way, no time. We have started the new superintendent search. We put out an RFP. We hired, as you saw the last board meeting, two board meetings ago, Ray and Associates. Focus groups will be meeting the week of January 19th. And there will be a town hall on January 19th from 6:30 to 8:30 for which the public will be invited. And there is a live webpage now, Superintendent Search on our website that has a questionnaire. And we would like as many people as we can find to fill that in, to give the board input. And my extreme thanks to Directors Patu, Gary, and Mack. And also, our extreme thanks to folks that have come to the Superintendent Search Subcommittee as well. Money, we don't have enough of it. Pure and simple. McCleary fixes in the last legislature did not fix our needs. One of the issues that has come up on social media this last week is that we have a dearth of school nurses and that children and students that have medical conditions sometimes cannot attend their neighborhood school because we do not have a full-time nurse. The state funds nine nurses throughout the district. The way that we determine where those nurses go is part of the weighted staffing standards. And I am aghast, a bold, believe it immoral, that we are putting safety and health in as a bargaining chip for our students. And I truly hope that you will pick up the phone and call your neighbors and call your legislators and call your city council folks and ask for help. Because it's just truly, truly not okay. We will be voting on an action item this evening with respect to whether the city of Seattle will give zoning or developmental variances in Southeast Seattle that the seven board members here that co-sponsored the resolution have strong feelings about. And we certainly have heard a great deal from a great many folks. But the schools in Southeast Seattle, Rainier Beach, Franklin High School, and Cleveland High School are making extraordinary gains and we very much would like to see them continue those gains. And there appears to be a good bit of support for that resolution in the city council. And there appears to be a good bit of pushback from certain council members that this is not a quote-unquote "technical fix" and it does not belong in the omnibus bill. So says a couple of the folks at City Hall as late as 4 p.m. today. Good people can make disagreement on those things, but charter schools do not have elected representatives overseeing them. And that's an issue of accountability. It's also an issue that is still before the state Supreme Court for the second time. And the last thing I'd like to talk about a little is grace and libel and slander. There is a whole lot of very ugly stuff going on out there in social media. And this school board continues to receive anonymous letters pointing out staff people by name in this district, but do not have the courage of their convictions to put their names on these letters or come to the table and back it up. And you know, we're all big folks here. We all chose to run for these offices because we care passionately. But we do not, nor does our staff, deserve to be libeled and slandered by folks. And I would respectfully, impassionately ask folks to model good behavior that we expect from our children and our students. And with that, we're going to take a short break until 5:30, at which time public testimony begins. Thank you.